Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, May 16th, 2018 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, this morning I'd like to remind you of an event we have going on this Friday. The law enforcement memorial ceremony will be held Friday at noon at City Hall, and this event is to help us honor the fallen law enforcement officials from Sedgwick County. On the agenda this morning, we have several items, three appointments, a proclamation, a contract for an event this Saturday, a review of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and a quarterly report from the Extension Center. And with that, Chairman, I will let you kick off the meeting.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. I want to welcome all the folks that are in the audience with us today, the folks that are joining us on KPTS, and those that'll be watching us on the Internet. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, May 16th, 2018. Madam Clerk, first item.
Incantation, to be led by Pastor Lyle Hinsdale, Church of Christ Clearwater. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning. Let's pray. Oh mighty Father God, we thank you for the lives that you have blessed us with. Thank you for the day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and for this meeting. Father, I thank you for these commissioners, and I ask your blessing on them for wisdom and for grace as they make decisions today. Father, for all those who are involved in the meeting today, we ask your blessings on them. We ask that the meeting would be conducted with wisdom and grace and integrity, Father, as you watch over and guide. We thank you for all the ways that you bless us and all the ways you call us to serve. Father, help those who serve to do so with integrity and wisdom. Father, we ask that you would bless them with that. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Proclamations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being with us today. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We have one person signed up to speak on the public agenda, Sybil Strum. You may approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Sybil Strum. I reside at 3,000 West Douglas, Mount Carmel Apartments, Apartment 412. I would like to express that the registered deed had caused so much trouble with me. I have been paying the taxes on 326 North Walnut since 1992. They said that they kept giving Laverne Becker. I am Sybil Strum, and I just received word that they had made a mistake on my name. And I have been paying a property tax ever since 1992. Now, how can you mess up someone's name and last name? So I went through a lot of trouble. Dave Unruh remembers because I called him. I said a Central came in my house without my permission and started finding things wrong with it, and I didn't know who to call, so I called Dave Unruh, and he helped me. He said, "Call the police. Tell them that a man came in and trespassed," because I had a sign that said, "No trespassing." My neighbor, Steve Martinez, asked the guy, what was his, you know, why was he there? And he said, "I'm not going to tell you." And he said that I will condemn this house. I don't care if she paid the property tax. I don't care. I'm going to take action. That's another thing that's going on in Wichita. Centrals are acting like they own the houses. And since the registered deed had caused me this trouble, I couldn't get a construction worker in that house to fix it up, and I am mad about that. I'm sorry. I'm angry because I gave a lady money to get the deed done in February, and it's now May 16th, and I am very angry. I want my deed. They should not have made a mistake on that deed. If I had paid those property taxes, which I had, I showed them it, that every year I was paying it, they should know my last name, but they put STURM. Now, another thing I want to get back is Police Department. I have been approached by the police, and I have filed several police reports on things that happened. I had that man over there, Lonnie, come at me and start trouble with me. So I want to know how us victims can get help if the police aren't going to do their job. And I got hit almost by a car, four o'clock in the afternoon. When I told the Lord Steiner Police Officer about it, he just laughed. He said, "It's not my problem." Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak today. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in the public agenda? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Daniel Cruz from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, we have four items on appointments today, and unfortunately, I don't think we can bulk any of them, so we'll have to take them each separately. Item A is the resignation of Daniel Cruz from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. Mr. Cruz had been the appointee of Commissioner O'Donnell. No replacement has yet been found for Mr. Cruz, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I move that we accept the resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item B, resolution appointing Roosevelt DeShazer to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Mr. Chairman, item B is a resolution that would appoint Roosevelt DeShazer to serve on the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. Mr. DeShazer is being appointed to fill the unexpired term of Reverend Terrence Holder, who resigned. This appointment, the appointment of Mr. DeShazer is being recommended by Commissioner David Unruh, and his term would expire on January 31st of 2019. Mr. DeShazer is present to be sworn, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would very respectfully move that we adopt the resolution and want to thank Mr. DeShazer for his willingness to serve. This is an important board. It has to do with personnel and legal matters, and so not everyone's qualified to do this, but I'm very pleased that you're willing to serve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. DeShazer.
I'd please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
I want to thank the board for this opportunity to serve my city and county. Again, it's a wonderful opportunity, and I take it very seriously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, resolution appointing Bernia Williams to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, again. This is a resolution appointing Ms. Bernia Williams to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board. This position had been held by Mr. Glenn Davidson, whose term has expired. Commissioner Richard Ranza is recommending that Ms. Williams be appointed, and her term would expire on May 31st of 2020. Ms. Williams is not expected to be here this morning, I don't believe, but I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution, and I want to thank Ms. Williams for her willingness to serve.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, resolution reappointing Annette Graham to the Art Council Board of Directors.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution reappointing Annette Graham to the Arts Council Board of Directors. Ms. Graham has been serving on this board, but her term has expired, her current term has expired. Her new term would expire on May 15th of 2021. The paperwork is in order, and I would urge adoption of the resolution. I don't believe Ms. Graham is present to be sworn.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Annette Graham to the Board of County Commissioners' reappointment to the Arts Council. She's a great appointee, and it's an important board. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations. Item E, proclamation declaring National Public Works Week.
We have a proclamation that I'd like to read. It says, "Whereas public service, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, bridges, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous waste, and noxious weed control, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts of skilled public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of quality, qualified, and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is substantially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David T. Dennis, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 20th to 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works, recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I move that we adopt the proclamation."
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And our Public Works Director, David Spears, is here to accept. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, David Spears is the county manager. Since 1960, APWA has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, our more than 30,000 members in the U.S. and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities, and building the quality of life. There would be no community without the quality of life public works provides. There would be no community to police and protect, no public to lead or represent. The Power of Public Works theme for the 2018 National Public Works Week poster gives voice to the impact that public works has on modern civilization. From disposing of solid waste, to building roads and bridges, to removing snow on roadways or devising emergency management strategies to meet natural or man-made disasters, public work services determine a society's quality of life. Thank you for the proclamation, and once again, I'd like to remind you that infrastructure is a mother's milk of economic development. And here is the poster, the national poster this year, "The Power of Public Works."
Well, Mr. Spears, thank you very much for accepting that and then for informing us of how important public works is. Yesterday, you got to come and brief us a little bit. I learned that not only do I have half the roads and half the bridges, I also have half the amount of noxious weeds in my district. It's an important service that you provide to all of our community. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
New business. Item F, contract for Household Hazardous Waste Remote Collection Event on May 19th, 2018 with Wichita State University.
Another important service provided by our Public Works Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Susan Earle Martin with Environmental Resources. Sedgwick County has a household hazardous waste facility. It's located at 801 Stillwell, and that's a place where citizens can bring their unwanted oils, old gasoline, unused paints, or old household cleaners that they no longer want. Get them out of the house and bring them down there, and we'll safely recycle or dispose of them. That facility is open Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 5, and on Saturdays, 9 to 3. But to better serve our community, we also have five remote household hazardous waste collection events every year. Our first event is this Saturday, May 19th. It's located at Wichita State University's Hughes Metroplex Center, and that's at 5015 East 29th Street North. That's on the south side of 29th Street North, about a quarter mile east of Oliver. So we encourage anyone who lives in the north part of Wichita, Bel Air, Kechai, Park City Valley Center, north area, come on down and bring your unwanted household hazardous waste this Saturday. We'll be taking the waste from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So we encourage you to come. If you're not sure of what material we will or will not take, you can always call 660-7464 to get more information. Or also check our website, sedgwickcounty.org, and we'll help you out. Thank you so much. WSU President Bardot has signed the contract that's in front of you, and I'd recommend you approving the contract, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ranza.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract. I want to thank Susans for her work on this and encourage everybody to get out this Saturday, 9 to 1 o'clock, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will second it, then. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thanks for doing this for us. Next item, please.
Item G, CJCC Review.
Well, good morning. Before we get started, I know the sheriff's in the room. The other day, we recognized Sergeant Barth as excellence in public service. I don't know if Sheriff wants to say any more about that, but I saw an article on KWCH, who happens to be in the room today, that also recognized Sergeant Barth, and I think maybe the sheriff may want to say a few words about that.
Yes. Last week, Sergeant Barth was recognized with the excellence in public service because of what he does, not only for the county and the sheriff's office, but what he does in his own personal life. He's a pastor with his church. He devotes a lot of time volunteering for the community, and is just a really, has a really big heart, and does a lot of volunteer work for folks as well. Yesterday, he's driving to work, sees a car partially submerged in a creek with two kids and two adults in the car, and so he went in to the creek and made sure the kids was able to get out safely and delivered them to some other citizens that were on the side of the creek, and then assisted the two other passenger, or the driver and the passenger in getting to the creek as well. And that's just a sign of, first off, how sheriff's deputies and law enforcement in general are always going to react, and secondly, it goes to the character of Sergeant Barth. He always puts people ahead of him. So thank you for letting me talk about that.
Thank you very much. Please pass on our sincere appreciation for everything that he does and all the officers do, especially this week, when we're recognizing everything that our officers do to protect us. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Sergeant Barth. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Captain Jared Schechter with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office and the Detention Bureau. I was going to give a brief overview concerning the CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, over jail population and program trends. This is actually from the April presentation. All the May presentations are not prepared yet. There's going to be March stats and later. Also, Stephen Stonehouse and Jay Holmes here to talk about their programs soon. We get to those slides. Talking about the detention facility, the first thing we look at with stats is talking about booking admits and housing releases. The jail, unlike the Department of Corrections, has to take everyone that's brought to us. We don't get to say we're full or we're at capacity and regulate who comes to us. We did see a pretty substantial spike in March after February. We had about 400 more inmates booked in in March, and actually, our bookings outpaced our releases, so it did affect our population some. A lot of these inmates that came in were actually able to be released on their own reconnaissance, so our jail population didn't overall spike too much. And if you look at the bottom-left corner, our booking trends are still slightly lower than previous years, so we have seen some reductions in the amount of bookings into the jail, but we still had over 2,200 bookings in March into the jail. Population trends over the last two years, you can see historically, March, April, we started to see a decrease in jail population throughout the colder months or wrapping up throughout the county and the community. We do anticipate our population will begin to increase in the summer, increase in the fall, as it historically does. Last fall was a very historic high. We hadn't gotten above 1,500 in many years, and we were extremely full last fall, so it forced a lot of different changes we had to do. Average length of stay, we have been working on this, trying to work with the Kansas Department of Corrections, work with the District Attorney's Office about moving inmates to prison in a rapid manner, getting people released out of custody in a quick manner on their own reconnaissance, working with the courts. So we were able to see a reduction in length of stay in the jail that had been creeping up for a while, so our average length of stay, as you can see, for the housing year is 37.8 days for everybody in housing, and then you combine that with the booking population that drops to 23 days, the average time somebody stays in jail right now. Look at our long-term jail population forecast in the past, I mean, our last, we have been decreasing until 2013, and since 2013, there's been a slight increase in jail population every year, so that forces us now to realize that we need to start looking at other programs, other services, to try to reduce our jail population, try to find other ways to do that. And something that we've been working on is developing other programs in the jail through our mentoring program, through our new score, our Sedgwick County Offender Reentry Program we've launched the last few months, try to work on connecting inmates with services and what they need. Before we look at any kind of program, we also need to look at what recidivism looks like in our jail, and this is something we actually started working on the last few months. We never really looked at recidivism in the jail, how often people come back, and we're talking about recidivism. We're talking about people released to our community. We're not including people who are released to prison, people who are sent out of state, people who are sent to other areas for warrants, people released on probation, day reporting, anyone that gets released to the community. And as you can see, within 90 days, between one-fourth and three-tenths of all inmates are brought back into jail within 90 days on a new offense. You look at six months out, that number climbs to about two out of five are booked back into jail. You look at a year, over half of the people who've been released are booked back into jail for a crime, and look at two years out, that crawls about six out of 10. So there is a problem with the same people being stuck, being constantly booked, constantly arrested. As far as we're looking at with our programs now, is finding a way to break that cycle, try to offer people more services, get people connected with jobs, community resources, things they might need. That's what our reentry program we've been working on very heavily for the last year and a half, but actually launched the last four months ago, to try to find ways to help these people that want help to be able to stay out in the community and not end up back in jail. And at that time, that concludes the jail portion of this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, or I can wait till the end, so.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
All right.
I don't see any questions. I hope we can do something about the recidivism.
Absolutely.
60% in two years is pretty high.
Is that the national average? Do you, or do you know that?
We're pretty close to the national average with those rates. It's very similar to the national average, so it's not, it's not that we're having a higher recidivism problem than other communities. We're pretty close to the national average, but it's a way for us to now evaluate our programs. So as we enroll inmates in these programs, we're tracking their recidivism separately, so hopefully, we can start to see what programs work and what doesn't, because we don't want to waste resources on programs that don't work. We have to be able to establish what works and what doesn't, so we had to set that baseline of figuring out what our current situation is. That's what we've done the last about six, eight months now by evaluating recidivism, because we never really looked at that before.
And this also includes those individuals who've been through our alternative programs?
We're only looking at people, the sheriff's office helping through the jail, through our mentoring program inside the jail and our reentering program inside the jail. You'd have to talk about, to Jay and other people, about their programs and what their rates look like, but this is just, we're just looking at what the sheriff's office is doing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell has a question.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say, Captain Schechter, thank you for your service and appreciate the presentation thus far. I wanted to say, Commissioner Ranza and myself, I think both serve on this committee, as well as Manager Scholz and a number of other people from the county, but we look at this fairly regularly, and it's always, it seems like it's always a challenge trying to manage the population at the jail. I just wanted to say a couple things. I know where the, one thing, I actually saw this on a TV news report yesterday, but they're talking about 66 jail deputy openings, and that, I think, continues to be a problem. In fact, I don't know what percentage of our, of our ideal staff numbers that would be, but it's a fairly significant shortfall in terms of staff over there. And so, I know it's not technically related to CJCC directly, but I want to just put a pitch out there for the sheriff and the community, just saying that it's a great opportunity to work for Sedgwick County. They provide, I think, fairly good salary and benefits package, and it's a great place to work and a great opportunity, is a stepping stone into a great career. And I just want to say that I hope that we can continue to put that plug out there to let people know that this is a great opportunity, and I know people who work over there, and they love it, and so I would encourage people to consider that as an occupation. That's really all I have, but I would say also, the DA and the sheriff also did present to us their budget requests for this next fiscal year, and it is alarming, some of the crime trends that are going on, and obviously, it's going to have an impact on what we do in terms of public safety and the jail management. So I am concerned for those trends, and I think it's something we need to be very, very vigilant to monitor these things that are going on, but, and thank you for your information so far. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Captain, now seeing any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Holmes, Deputy Director of Adult Programs for the Division of Corrections, and I'm here today to provide some general statistical information about our adult programs that are routinely shared during the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council meetings. This slide that's currently up illustrates that the pretrial services population is climbing as we projected over the course of the last two years. That aqua-colored line kind of indicates that we've been, in the last quarter, pretty much at an all-time high, going back to 16 of year-to-date average population of 306, and again, that's through the end of March of 2018. The next slide is really interesting to us. I'm sure it's interesting to jail staff as well, that it appears that the jail population has decreased slightly at this point in calendar year 2018, but the percentage of possible inmates being supervised by a pretrial services program is at an all-time high through the, through the first quarter of 2018. You know, it's obvious that this alternative program is diverting inmates from the Sedgwick County Jail and to their homes under the supervision of intensive supervision officers, and as a result, is having the desired effect of saving jail bed spaces. The next slide covers our drug court program. Drug court population has dropped in the past year, is illustrated by the orange line there on the graph. line there on the graph. Uh, this can be attributed to some staff turnover that we've experienced in the last year, and, uh, some suitability decisions that, that, that have been made has impacted our ADP. Uh, at this point, we're now fully staffed and, uh, look forward to increasing our average daily population, uh, in the second half of the calendar year 18. The next slide, uh, kinda, it, it indicates, uh, where our ADP is in regards to our adult intensive supervision program and residential. Uh, our ADP in, uh, the adult intensive supervision program has, has dropped to, uh, a little below 1,460. Uh, this can be attributed, uh, in my opinion, to fewer felony intakes that we received in calendar year 17. Uh, specifically, you know, we received 120 fewer intake assignments from the district court than the previous year. Uh, however, intakes through the first, uh, through the first quarter of calendar year 18 have increased significantly. If this pattern continues, uh, our ADP will rebound by the end of the year. The residential population has remained consistently in the 60s for the last two years. Uh, this facility, as you know, is, is utilized as a sanction center, center for community corrections clients that violate a condition of probation and can potentially benefit, uh, from the structure and services provided at that facility. And this last slide, uh, kinda represents an annualized average daily population for the last two years of the, uh, adult programs and, and, and the jail population. It breaks down the overall numbers that are represented in each adult program, and in the next report to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, there'll be a slide specifically related to the work release population. As you see that number there, in, uh, 2018, at the end of March, we had an average daily population of 30, and we just fully became operational with that program, uh, at the end of February, and, um, you know, I'm happy to report, as of yesterday, our ADP in the work release program was 54. So, we're starting to see an increase in the number of, uh, work release clients being assigned to us, both from municipal court and district court. Uh, finally, I'd just like to thank you for allowing us to share information about our adult corrections programs, and would be willing to entertain any questions that you have at this point.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I guess my only question is, and you just talked about it a little bit, but drug court, we keep hearing more and more problems in drugs, and yet, uh, the number of people going to drug court, uh, is declining, it's kind of surprising.
Well, we have, uh, you know, we've been short-staffed, and as a result of that, we've had a, a supervisor that's had to take on a responsibility of supervising a caseload. Now that we've, we are fully staffed, I, I anticipate that that ADP will increase.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? I usually don't, I usually don't harass our, our conferees with questions, but I would like to ask something. Uh, Mr. Holmes, Ericios, County Counselor, are there, are there some legal impediments to some of these alternative programs being, uh, expanded even more that the legislature could address, uh, and make things a little bit, loosen up things for you a little bit?
Yeah, I, I'm not a, I'm not aware of any, some of the criteria that we have in place at this point, uh, you know, for example, for our residential program and, uh, drug court in particular, uh, you know, there's certain things that need, uh, need to be met in order for us to effectively supervise folks. Uh, for example, you know, there, there needs to be somewhat of an underlying sentence for, for these folks, uh, for us to even consider placing them in drug court or residential. If they have less than four or five months' worth of time to serve, you know, and a lot of these folks get to that point, then, you know, there's really no motivation or incentive for them to, to successfully complete.
Do we, have we utilized pre-trial services as much as we could, or is there anything that's holding us back on that?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that's holding us back, you know, we've seen a huge increase in the last year, uh, you know, could we, could we assume, uh, more clients? We certainly could.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Oh, Commissioner Enroe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, well, I just, just wanna make the, the comment that if, were it not for these alternatives and pre-trial services and the different programs we have, our, our jail, I mean, we would be talking about, uh, building more jail space. So, um, what, the work you do is very, very important, and your people that are involved in it need to, um, understand that we appreciate their efforts in trying to keep our community safe at, at the lowest possible cost, because this, um, were we not to have these, the cost of, um, incarceration would, would totally overburden and blow our budget apart. So, anyway, it's, it's, it's important for the individuals, but it's also important for us making business decisions, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, and I'll pass that along to my staff.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Stonehouse with Sedgwick County Division of Corrections. I'm here to talk about the juvenile version of the jail, which is a juvenile detention facility, and then the alternatives which, um, we have in place to, um, help youngsters remain out of detention if they can safely. Um, the first slide shows a snapshot of just March, uh, average daily population for the last four years, and you'll notice that in the detention facility, there's a pretty steady decline in our numbers, and that is consistent, what we've seen for about the last seven or eight years is a decline in our admits and, um, um, average daily population in the detention facility. And below that really are the alternatives available to the court for youth to remain under supervision of the court but not in the juvenile detention facility. The juvenile residential facilities' population has struggled, um, in the last four years, part of that is a function of fewer kids in the detention facility, so there are fewer kids to go over to the residential facility. Um, home, home-based supervision's numbers are growing, that's the equivalent of our pre-trial program for kids, so, um, those provide supervision of intensive supervision officers to allow juvenile offenders to be released from the detention facility and be supervised at home pending their next court date. So, that program continues to steadily grow just a bit as youth can be maintained in the community pending outcome of their court hearings. And then Detention Advocacy Case Management Services is yet another program. This program is contracted by the county and performed by Kansas Legal Services, and it performs much of the same duties to, yeah, offer yet another program to supervise juvenile offenders, um, pending outcome of their court. So, as with the jail, if you would add all of the numbers together, that would put us over capacity for what we have available in the detention facility, so our alternatives give us good options to, um, reserve the most expensive and secure beds for those juvenile offenders who the court deem need that level of care. And the next slide just presents, um, a visual representation of what happens at the front door. The juvenile intake and assessment center is the receiving facility for all juveniles who are arrested in Sedgwick County, and you'll notice, um, since January of '12, a steady decline. If I could do math, I could pay more money, but you'll notice a downward slope, so there is fewer kids coming through the intake and assessment center, and that's a trend that we continue to see month after month, that there are fewer and fewer kids, um, coming in through intake and assessment. And our JDF population remains, um, pretty steady between low 60s and, um, mid 50, mid 50s, but there is an overall trend of fewer kids being in the detention facility every day. Um, so that's just a brief overview of the juvenile detention continuum in Sedgwick County, and this information is also presented to CJCC. Um, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain anything.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have, I guess, two questions on, uh, uh, second to the last slide there. You, you show the weekend alternative detention programs going to zero.
Yes.
Can you please explain that, if you already said that, I, I may have missed it, because I was looking at your data, but I, can you please explain how that goes to zero?
Yes, um, we had some staffing turnover in that position, and we were finding it hard to get enough referrals to make it go on a monthly basis, so we took the last part of the year to really assess who the kids were coming into the program, and in this first quarter, we are revamping the program to include programming on Wednesday and Saturdays, so the program's not gonna be a weekend alternative anymore, it's gonna be a, a mid-week and a Saturday community service program, so we'll get that started here, um, this quarter.
So, you probably report that with a different description, but you'll, you'll see some new numbers pop up somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay. Then on the trend lines on the next, I guess, the last slide there, the trend lines are, are, uh, positive, I guess, I, I mean, as long as there's less, less offenses or less crime being committed, that's obviously a good thing. It seems like, with the crime trends we saw from the District Attorney and from the sheriff earlier, it seems like the population as, in, in general, we're seeing a, an increase in crime trends, uh, on, on, I guess, the major, the major crimes that are being tracked are showing an increase. I'm just curious, is, are there less offenses by juveniles being committed? Is that what's going on here? Or we just have less of them going through our system, or what's going on?
I can say there's less going through our system, I don't know, I know the, I know what law enforcement is reporting does not necessarily match what we're seeing in our facilities, um, but we're largely a product of the, um, court system and of the kids who are actually charged by the District Attorney's Office, so that's what we're seeing is fewer filings.
So, if they don't go through the JAC or JDF, then where do they go? I mean, if there's, if there's a, if there's a, a young person that's been charged with some type of a, an offense, and they don't go to JDF or JAC, are we?
They would go straight to the court.
Okay. I'll have to think about that for a while. All right, thank you for that, thank you for the information, I appreciate it, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Enroe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Steve, the home-based supervision is, is that the program that, um, replaced what the, the programs we had at Judge Riddell Boys Ranch?
No, sir, that. Um, home-based supervision offers, uh, release from detention. The program, Judge Riddell Boys and Girls Alternative Programs, replaced the program at the Boys Ranch, and that's offered at, uh, at Juvenile Field Services, and that provides programming, um, in the evening hours, that's separate from this.
Okay, so this is separate from this report?
Yes.
Well, can you make, uh, a comment, um, without factual data in front of you? And tell us how's that going?
I can do that all day. Um, Judge Riddell Boys, Boys and Girls Alternative Program offers programming to juvenile offenders who would otherwise be in out-of-home placements, and it offers an opportunity for kids to be served in their community, um, and receive programming that's shown to reduce their risk for recidivism. Um, programming is offered five days a week at Juvenile Field Services, and the first year of data, we're seeing about a 16% recidivism rate for those kids who actually complete all the programs, so that's, um, pretty goo, that's, those initial numbers that one year are pretty good for the kids that are able to continue, or, excuse me, complete the program. It's rigorous training, it's, um, 420 hours for high-risk kids that they have to come to group and participate, so it's a, it's very structured programming for them.
Okay, well, thank you for that, um, explanation, and, um, and I, I would just like to kinda give a, a shout-out, a recognition to your volunteer program that works at the juvenile detention facility. Uh, my wife and I had the privilege of, um, setting in on your recognition that you have for those folks, and we had, um, nice, nice dinner with ice cream and prizes and things to recognize those folks, but I don't know the total number, but there's a good number of folks who volunteer their time to give counseling and support to these folks, uh, young fellows, young and girls that are in, in detention. And, um, so just wanted to say thanks to them, and if, and if there's something I said wasn't quite right, well, you, you correct me, but I was impressed by their commitment.
Right, we offer, um, we have about 100 community volunteers, um, from the various churches, from the Diocese of Wichita, from the Optimist Club, who give of their time to juvenile offenders, um, and their families really, at, at the juvenile detention facility for religious and non-religious programming, um, tens of thousands of hours every year, and we're very appreciative of them, and we're happy to have you in attendance that night.
Well, make sure they know that the County Commission appreciates their commitment.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions, we appreciate all the information that you provided us, uh, we're in a big gathering mode right now, actually, on a lot of data, because we're in the mid, middle of the budget cycle also, so this is just, uh, one more piece of information to put with everything else we've gotten. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enroe?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all very much for talking, speaking with us today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, County Extension Quarterly Report.
Thank you. Matt, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Matthew McKernan, and I'm the Ornamental Horticulture Agent for the Sedgwick County Extension Office. Um, in my role, I serve the, the county residents and the horticulture industry in, uh, dealing with horticulture issues related to trees, shrubs, flowers, insects, diseases, um, and help to provide them solutions to serve either their customers or their own landscape. Uh, so I'm honored to be here with you today and have an opportunity to share with you a few of the things going on in our horticulture program. Um, this spring, we've had a lot of questions related to weather. As you all have known, it's been a very up and down spring and late winter, um, so we're seeing a lot of injury on plants that we're helping people deal with. Um, the winter, for the most part, was extremely cold, but not an extreme temperature cold, so it was cold for a prolonged period of time, but it wasn't extreme temperatures. So, that was good for most of our plant material. Uh, the problem we're seeing most commonly right now, though, is drought injury, uh, on our plants, because during the winter months, we saw very little to no rainfall in most areas of the county. Um, most people had their irrigation systems turned off, so there was no supplemental watering, and most people just didn't think about dragging out hoses to go water their trees or shrubs. So, a lot of that is showing up late in the spring here as our temperatures start to warm up. Um, really damage to the lawn, to the turf grass is probably what's most noticeable for people, uh, because it's been slow to green up earlier in the spring, and especially turf under trees or areas next to trees, um, that turf grass is extremely weak and damaged, because really the trees outcompeted the turf grass for water during the early spring and winter months. Um, so the trees won in that case, which is really a good thing, because they're much harder to replace, um, but that is leading to more problems and a lot of questions, as you mentioned earlier this morning, Commissioner, about weeds, uh, because as those temp, uh, excuse me, as those lawns are damaged by weeds, uh, or, excuse me, the, the lawns are weakened, um, so they're thinner, they're less healthy, less vigorous, and then they're more prone to weed and disease problems earlier on this spring and summer. Uh, also seeing a lot of questions related to trees, because, especially evergreens, that wind is constantly pulling moisture out of the leaves during the winter months, and because there was no water in the, added to the soil to replace it, that's causing some branch dieback and dying of especially newly planted trees and evergreen trees in our area. Um, our late spring freezes and those April snows that we had are also causing some issues for people, um, a lot of injury to plants that leafed out early or started to grow because of our warmer February, um, but a lot of that stuff is going to be able to recover, it's just gonna be a little bit weaker this spring. But, all in all, with the weather, there is some good news, because we had that extreme cold, or that prolonged period of cold this winter, that's good at reducing our insect populations, it's more beneficial to reducing some of those numbers. Um, even though it's a little bit too early to establish a lot of insect trends, hopefully we will see some less problems this spring. I think the problem that most people are dealing with this spring is ticks, there seems to be a high population of ticks out there, so there's some things that our residents of Sedgwick County can do to help prevent themselves. The first thing to know is really where ticks are residing. Ticks are a flightless, wingless creature that feed on blood, whether that's human, animal, bird, blood, um, and so they attack those hosts essentially with an ambush technique, meaning they're gonna crawl up on tall grasses, low brush, or weeds, and then wait for someone to walk by and brush up against that foliage. And when they do, those ticks jump off of that plant onto their host and search for a place to feed on either us or our pets, things like that. Um, so, anytime that we can avoid those areas of tall brush, typically ticks are not gonna be more than a couple feet off of the ground, they're generally never coming from trees or areas like that. Um, they may crawl a couple feet in response to us moving around, heat being produced or other stimulus. Um, but some things we can do besides just avoiding those areas of tall grass, brush, and weeds is to wear light-colored clothing, um, and this has worked for me even this spring, because if you're wearing lighter colored pants, for example, those dark ticks stand out very clearly on that light-colored clothing, so you can often catch them on you before they actually start to feed. Um, insect repellents are also going to be very effective in helping prevent tick feeding on you, um, so that would be insect repellents containing either DEET or Pecaridin that you could spray on you safely. And the other important thing for people to know is, if you do have a tick feeding on you, the quicker you remove it, the less likely you are to have diseases or other problems that that tick may be carrying transmitted to you. So, the sooner that we remove ticks on us or our pets, the less likely we are to be, uh, influenced by any kind of diseases that a tick might be carrying. of diseases that a tick might be carrying. One other thing that I'd like to share with you all today is a recognition that our master gardener volunteers from across the state of Kansas received, actually, two weeks ago today, at the House of Representatives up in Topeka. In 2017, our master gardeners were across the state of Kansas, provided over 100,620 hours of service to the state of Kansas, which has a dollar value of over $2.23 million. The really exciting thing, and I think what you'll be interested to know, is across the state, over 20% of that service happened right here in Sedgwick County. Our 297 master gardeners in Sedgwick County contributed over 19,452 hours of recorded service to Sedgwick County in 2017. So if you average that out, that's about 65 and a half hours of service per year per volunteer, or the equivalent of 9.3 of me, a full-time employee being paid by the county. So here locally, that dollar value is about $469,000 and $571, and really have a huge impact across the community. One of the biggest things that our master gardeners are working on this spring is our gardening hotline, where they answer questions related to insects, diseases, plant selection, and provide research-based information from K-State to our local residents, horticulture industry, and things like that. And so I'm responsible for helping train those master gardeners. And currently, this spring, we've averaged about 150 residents of Sedgwick County either coming into our office, calling on the phone, or sending in emails with questions. And 150 is a large amount for this time of year because typically, our summer months are when we get our peak question answering. Another great thing that our master gardeners have done this spring is hosting youth lawn mowing clinics where they're teaching youth, ages in grades five to nine, about lawn mower maintenance, safety, proper turf grass care, business professionalism, how you would essentially create a lawn mowing business and interact with your customers. And this year, we hosted 55 different youth, grades five through nine. And one really great thing this year that we found out is we had a child named Brayden who attended this class three years ago. He immediately then went out and started a lawn mowing business with the skills that he learned and had been saving up his money for three years. So this spring, he actually was able to purchase his first truck with cash that he had saved up from his lawn mowing business. So he not only saved up enough money to pay for a truck with cash, but he also plans to use that truck to help his business and has also used the additional money to start a college savings as well. So the skills that we're hopefully able to teach these children and youth are being implemented in a variety of ways, but I just thought that was one great example of a youth this spring who was a great success from this program. So besides presenting many other presentations at the Wichita Public Libraries and to various community organizations, these are just a few ways that our master gardeners are involved in the community. But appreciate the opportunity to visit with you more about what they do, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I would just like to add, we also have Dr. Jim Lindquist here from K-State to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer for you today. So happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you for the presentation this morning. You did a good job. And I want to just, I guess, my simple question is, the county extension is the same budget as the Extension Council. Is that, they're connected and related, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So, yeah. I had some questions about the budget and, I guess, the election process for the Extension Council.
Sure.
Before I get to that, let me just say I do appreciate everything that you all do. You provide a tremendous service. I get lots of great compliments from all kinds of people who use your services. They like the advice and the guidance. You guys provide, I guess, some kind of training as well. The fact that we have K-State presence here in the county, there's nobody else that competes or provides what you all provide. And so I think it's great to have a K-State resource in the county providing that service. And I will just mention that agriculture is one of our major economic drivers or sectors of our state, including in Sedgwick County. So I know there's a lot of people who depend on the services you provide, and it does have a benefit to all of our Sedgwick County citizens. And so I'll say thank you for that. I can tell you that it is a science that has changed probably over the decades. As I've visited some of the farmers, they really do use a lot of science in what they do. It's no longer just go out there and put your thumb in the air and try to figure out what to do. That's what I do, and I fail miserably. I don't have the green thumb, science knack, but you all do, and I appreciate what you provide there. I do have a couple of questions, though. Looking at the budget book, it looks like the budget is around about $825,000 roughly. And I know this is kind of an old topic, but I guess I'm just curious what your position is, or can you please help me understand the process? The Extension Council, I guess, they are elected during some type of annual election, is it once a year?
That is correct. And I might refer these questions to Jim.
Sure, it'd be great.
I think he'd probably be a little more prepared.
You can please introduce yourself and help answer questions as well. That'd be great. But I understand, basically, there is an election that happens, and I guess it is advertised, but it's not done through the election office. It's done kind of there in your own facility. Can you please describe the process?
Yeah. Commissioners, hi. I'm Jim Lindquist, Assistant Director for K-State Research and Extension, and work with a number of our units across the state. Very happy to be here for Matt's presentation this morning. I think that the front desk gets about 30,000 calls a day, and Matt said this spring, he thinks most of them are coming for him and his master gardener volunteers. So there's a lot of citizens that are utilizing.
Did you say 30,000 calls a day?
A year.
Thank you.
30,000. If I said a day, I misspoke. Matt thinks they're that many in a day.
It feels like it sometimes.
30,000 calls that come across the front desk, in addition to all the educational programs that are going on. But to answer your question about the election process, of course, the State Extension Council law that was written many years ago has a process for citizens coming together in a meeting format to hold an election, to elect Program Development Committee members. And there are four different Program Development Committees that are organized under the Extension Council. One represents agricultural pursuits, which horticulture is a part of. One represents 4H Youth Development Programs, one Family and Consumer Science Programs, and one Community Vitality Programs. So the citizens participate in that election process. And then, as those Program Development Committee members are elected, those 24 individuals, six representing each of those four subcategories, come together, hold an annual meeting, and elect a nine-member executive board. And it's that executive board, then, that has the responsibility under the Extension Council statute for being the local management board for the extension program.
And is this election advertised in some way so the citizens of the community can participate?
And I can't give you specifics about what happens here, but generally, yes. What happens, there is, of course, a legal public notice that is a part of that process, but then there's marketing and advertising of the election broadly through the community. My understanding here in Sedgwick County is that Facebook is utilized, the Extension electronic newsletter that goes to all the Extension users is one of the vehicles for getting information out. And I think a couple of years ago, the Program Development Committee is organized to try to find a way to try to involve more people in the election process. Through the years, people don't tend to come to those kinds of event activities like they used to, just for the purpose of an election. If there were an educational program, you know, that would draw more people in. But just for an election, that doesn't seem to be as higher priority. But so this year, I think, my understanding is, they went out to several locations in the county. They had utilized the rec center in Derby. They utilized a facility in Mount Hope. They were in two or three other places around the county in addition to at the Extension Center, and offered the election opportunity to the people that would come into those locations. There are 50 counties in the state of Kansas still organized under the Extension Council method that follow the statute in that election process. There are 55 counties that have organized into Extension Districts, multi-county Extension Units. And in those, in that law, the district extension law, the governing body members are elected on the general election ballot. So when people come in to vote in those odd year fall municipal elections, they're voting for Extension governing body members in addition to everybody else that they're voting for. Obviously, participation is much greater in those situations where people have that opportunity.
Yeah, that brings up a lot of thoughts. And so we're one of the 50, we actually have the 50 or 49 counties, okay. Well, I don't know that I need to change something that's working, but I guess it is interesting that there's nearly a million dollars from the county, basically controlled essentially by this council. And you said there's 24 elected members?
24, yes.
Are the counties that do it through general election ballot, are they large bodies like this one? Are they smaller, or?
Most everybody's smaller. None of the really large counties in Kansas have organized into multi-county Extension District Units. It's, I guess, the largest counties would be down in the southeast corner of the state. Crawford, LaBette, Montgomery, and Wilson are organized. That's probably our largest populated district, about 110,000 people living in that, in those four counties that comprise that Extension District. So much different than the population.
So does everybody in Sedgwick County have the right to vote on this election?
Everybody that's 18 years of age and a legal resident, yes, does have the right to vote.
Do you have a poll book or a voter registration thing, you're verifying that there's one vote per person type of thing?
When people come in, they sign a register that indicates that they've voted so that there's not duplication, that they're not voting at multiple sites or that sort of thing. I suppose, I'm not sure what kind of a process there is, Matt, to verify that it's an individual not showing up any other than just one location, but.
So in terms of election principles, you know, what about someone who's absent? Can they vote an absentee ballot?
There is not a process. The Extension Law calls for it to be a physical meeting location. And so, again, that's just one of the peculiarities of the Extension statute.
So there's no early voting?
There's no early voting, yeah.
So this just brings up a lot of questions in my mind. I guess, you know, I don't want to change something that's working, but I do think there's a, the process itself does, I hate to use the word disenfranchise, but it does seem like it disenfranchises military members, people who can't be there that day, or maybe they're working during the election time. There's a number of things that come up in my mind, and to the extent this is a, I'll use it as an authority type of council that actually has the ability to spend about a million dollars. And since they're not appointed officials, they are elected officials. I'm interested in making sure the election is done in a way that every Sedgwick County citizen has the equal right and opportunity to vote in that election. And right now, with the way this is being done, I've heard it termed, maybe this is an offensive term, hopefully not, but it's called a shoebox election. You know, where there's a box, you fill out a slip of paper and stick it in the box, and someone's probably counting those slips up at the end of the day, kind of like, you know, it really doesn't, it doesn't parallel in any way what I consider to be, you know, the quality elections we like to provide on elected officials that are doing what we do here, for example.
Sure.
So I guess I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think the Extension District method is, has, my observation, is very valuable. It creates a much greater awareness of the extension program when that person's on the ballot, and the citizen that's voting for every other elected office has an opportunity to vote for that Extension governing body member.
Well, it's an item for us to discuss. I'm not sure what we should do here, but I do, the fact there's 55 counties that have a way to do this on the general ballot, I would, I guess we ought to have that discussion and maybe find out whether that's better for our county. This reminds me of the, I use the phrase "growing up." Maybe this is the way it was done a long time ago. We've always done it this way. But now that we've, we live with a lot of technology, we're doing elections anyway. It would not be hard for us to do this differently in a way that helps every citizen have a voice in this. And I have no problem with what anything that Extension Council does in terms of services. I love what they do. I have, I think, nothing but positive comments about the services you provide. And I'm not worried about the money. I think you all do a great job with your budget. So I don't really have any complaints, other than the fact that the quote-unquote shoebox election is not, I guess it needs to grow up a little bit, perhaps. And in terms of 24 people, I don't care if it's 24 or another number, doesn't matter to me. But I just think the issue itself ought to be addressed on a principle basis, that everybody in Sedgwick County needs to have a voice when there's an election. And I, since we do a good job with elections already, our equipment can handle pretty much anything you throw at them. I would just like to have a discussion about possibly changing it this 21st century. 21st century is starting to maybe grow up a little bit.
You know, I think it would require someone looking at the statutes and seeing if there's any flexibility to do something differently. I will tell you that several years ago, Republic County allowed for a table to be set up at every polling center in the county that was for the Extension election. They weren't on the ballot. That people came in to vote for everyone else. They went to a separate table, but they were able to vote for the Extension Council representatives then at each polling site within the county. Now, that might be very difficult to pull off in Sedgwick County with the number of polling places that you have. But in a small rural county, that system seemed to work.
Yeah, we have, I guess, our planned election coming up here in August is going to have 73 poll sites, and some of them are space limited. I mean, we're having trouble in some poll sites adding equipment to help with some of the waiting things that have been brought up last staff meeting about a week ago. But, you know, adding a little bit of equipment might help that, but they're saying in some places, the poll site doesn't have any room for more stuff. So that might not be something that would work everywhere. But anyway, I guess I have a desire that we ought to talk about, maybe this, if it requires legislation to change this, maybe we ought to add this to our platform. It's something for us to talk about down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Certainly on the conversation.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Doctor. And Matt, thank you for the presentation earlier. Piggybacking on what Commissioner Howell was just saying, so roughly half the counties in the state do it different than we do here in Sedgwick County. So is that something that your office would work with our legal department and our election office to come up with a 21st century voting plan?
Sure. Let me clarify. The 55 counties that are doing it differently are organized into multi-county units, so they become an Extension District. So it's beyond just a single county entity then. It's two or more counties organized into one Extension unit, and then their governing body members are elected from each county to serve on the district governing body for that multi-county unit. So there's, right now, the 50 counties that are organized under the Extension Council way of organization, the statute controls the election method for that. And so we'd have to take a look at that and see if there was any way to have some flexibility with that system.
But your office is willing?
Yes, yes. Could work with you to have conversations about it and see what might need to be done.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. And obviously, the Sedgwick County Farm Bureau is very strong, particularly for an urban city as large as Wichita, have a farm bureau as strong as ours is, is a great testament to what K-State has done with the Extension Office County. But I do agree with Commissioner Howell that it seems like we're disenfranchising a lot of elderly that are on, or people that are disabled on the permanent mailing list, the military members. Even if we were to put up, like Republic County did, put up a table in each polling location, you're still not going to get the military and the people on the advanced ballot list. But, Doctor, I do appreciate you coming down, and it was great timing that you were down today for that overview as well. And Matt always does a good job.
Thank you. Matthew is outstanding. Learning with McKernan, you can't go wrong. So he does a wonderful job.
It's a good catchphrase.
I would, he coined that, by the way. So I would mention that there is a mail ballot option within the Extension Council law, but it's very expensive, obviously, and would be very expensive to do that sort of an election method for the Extension Council.
That's why it would make more sense to work with our election office and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have one question.
Oh, sorry.
We all got a copy of this governing body handbook. If there was an Extension District, it looks like they have taxing authority.
That is correct.
The way that we're set up right now, without an Extension District, they do not have taxing authority, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I like the way we're organized.
Yeah. And that's a choice, that's a choice that counties can make. It's an option. And there are two different organizing methods. So your method is through the Extension Council.
Okay. Well, I don't think we need one more taxing authority in Sedgwick County right now. So I think we'll stick with what we've got. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, just as a follow-up comment there, you know, if we're talking about changing legislation, yeah, we received urban area designation, urban, or urban county designation now. I'm using the wrong term right now. But the point I'm trying to say is, if we're talking about changing legislation anyway, I don't know why we'd have to necessarily make it a district like we're talking about, but simply deal with the election process only. I think, I'm happy with everything else you're doing. The funding is great. I have no complaints about anything that you guys do. It's just this issue of the election itself. And so I just would like to say, if you just dealt with that one issue, it wouldn't change anything else. I think that would be where I would feel very comfortable with having that conversation and potentially seeing some legislation that would address that.
What I would invite you to do is perhaps send a letter to our Director of Extension asking to have some discussion about that. We have a State Extension Advisor Council. These are representatives from across the state that are elected locally to serve in an advisor capacity and could get the input from the other 49 counties that are organized as you are to see what their interests might be in supporting doing something a bit differently.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good. I don't have a problem with us looking at that when we come up with our legislative agenda next year, but I don't want to add another taxing authority.
I understand.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it very much. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Chairman, we need to receive and file.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move that we receive and file?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Now, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items India through Papa.
Commissioner Ranzau?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items India through Papa. I do have a question. I think Tanya is in the room about item O, which is the amendment for the EMS Post 8. Can you tell me when this project is supposed to be completed?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Director of Facilities Maintenance and Project Services. The work on this project started with the contractor on May 7th, and they will complete the work on August 25th.
August 25th, and I know this, we're going to, we're going to repair this instead of building a whole new one. This is up on 53rd Street in my district, which saved a fair amount of money from the original proposal. Do you have an estimated cost savings?
I'm going to lean on Lindsay to answer that question.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Pousso, CFO. When this project was originally contemplated to be a replacement project, the estimated cost was going to be about 1.4 million, and we had talked about doing some bonding. That was a few years ago, when interest rates were really good, and so, what we would have estimated to spend entirely on the project, including principal and interest, would have been $1,875,318. Based on the amendment that's before you now, the cost is $427,239, and so, that is avoided cost of just less than 1.45 million dollars.
1.45 million?
Yes, sir.
You add that into the cost savings on the EMS station in Commissioner Unruh's district, and that's, that's getting into some real money. So, we're very happy and excited that, to get this done, and August 25th, we'll be looking forward to seeing what everything looks like. And I know staff has gone through a lot of different iterations of this to get to where we're at, and I appreciate all the work and looking forward to it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend Commissioner Ranzau for leadership on this item. I don't think I would have known that this was an option without him making us aware of that. I think it's always fun to have new buildings, and everybody, everybody likes new buildings, but I think taxpayers, taxpayers appreciate when we refurbish older buildings and wear them out, give them more time and more life. This is a brick-and-mortar building, it's substantial, and it's, it's probably not going to be as fun as a brand-new building, but I do think that it's going to provide good services to that community. So, I appreciate saving 1.45 million dollars, and I credit Commissioner Ranzau for bringing this solution to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to second the motion, and any discussion? See none? We have a motion for India through Papa on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Do we have anything, Mr. Yost or Mr. Deere, for legislative agenda? Very good. Things are peaceful, all of our folks are home.
Aye, but you're...
Thank you. Next item, please.
Other?
Thank you. Does any of the commissioners have anything for other?
If I can find it, yes, I do.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you. Just as a, going slightly backwards, on our, on our consent agenda, every week we approve our check register, the checks they write. I just wanted to highlight something. I wanted to just tell the Finance Department how much I appreciate their work. This is just a typical week, but this week we had 803 checks that are going to be drawn on Sedgwick County for a total of $771,709. To me, that's, just shows how much work they have to do, and I appreciate their good work. And, but I wanted to point out, of that $771,000, $208,000 of that is for six adjacent or nearby counties for, I presume it's out-of-county jail inmate placement. And so, again, I wanted to just highlight the fact that that's a very, very expensive part of trying to keep our community safe. We spend that money on behalf of the community, but I'm excited for the fact that we're redoing, or repurposing, refurbishing the old work release facility at Harry and McLean, and with that, we're expected to save about a million dollars a year that can provide services in other ways to the community. So, just to, just want to highlight that, that great, I guess, management of a problem and trying to save money, and becoming more efficient, more effective is one of our principles, one of our goals, and so, I think we're demonstrating that, both with the restructuring of the work release facility, but also our Finance Department that continues to provide excellent accountability and services to the county. Again, just a typical week, 803 checks and $771,000 worth of spending.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else for other? See none? Madam Clerk, next item?
Executive session.
Mr. Unruh?
Mr. Chairman, I have three motions for executive sessions, and we'll take them one at a time. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 10:32 to consult with an attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session is required to take protective, to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item?
Next motion, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for five minutes until 10:37 to consult with an attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:07 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 11:07.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. We are recessed until 11:07.[1046.54]